So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 29, 2022, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. I heard a knock on the wall. I believe that means we can go.
Push the button.
I did.
You're good, sir.
Thank you. Welcome. Is Pastor Harold with us this morning for an invocation? Good morning, sir. Thank you. From Asbury Methodist Church.
From Asbury Solomon's Retirement Community. Yes, sir. Good to be with you this morning.
Good to have you here.
Let us pray. "Gracious and loving God, you've placed us in communities for our nurture and well-being. Communities we're born into, families and culture. Communities we choose, our associations of friendship and work. And communities we embrace, where we study, live, offer our best for the good of others. We thank you this day for all of our communities, especially as we live them out here in our Calver County home. We thank you for the opportunity to celebrate the excellence of our young people's achievements in sport, Go Canes, and their unique gifts and challenges as they grow and mature, and we would pray thrive. For the chance to celebrate the achievements of the exemplary among those who serve our community professionally, and for the purpose of conducting the business of our county, the appointment of committee members, approval of grants and other measures. So we ask your guidance, Holy One, for our Board of County Commissioners and the staff who support their work and serve their neighbors by their excellence and expertise, for the work of the citizens toward the public good, offering comments and exercising those due rights of all Americans. As we gather in peace, we give you thanks for that peace, even as we remember that there is trouble and conflict elsewhere in the world around us. Mindful of that, we lift our prayers for the just vanquishing of invaders and oppressors everywhere, the resisting of injustice, and the preservation of all of that which makes for the common wheel here and in every place. Confident in your goodness, grateful for your love, we offer this beautiful day to you in the still more beautiful sacredness of your holy name. Amen."
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Harold. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Public service announcements. Today at seven o'clock tonight, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting at Calver Broadcast down at the industrial park right off of the Skipjack Lane. So, we invite the public to come there. It's a new venture initiated by the county to do public broadcasting work. So, I encourage all of you that want to come out and see, get to visit the venue and see what the activities are gonna be in that new program. And the Maryland Osprey and National Festival is April the 2nd, down at the Drumpoint Club in Lesby. It's a mission to educate and conservation and celebration of our natural resources that aligns with Calver County's goal to preserve, protect, and conserve thriving plant and animal communities that make their home here. So, I don't have a time for that, but it's this coming Saturday down at the Drumpoint Club in Lesby. So, I have, the next item on the agenda is proclamations. The first proclamation that we have is for the Huntington High School. Commissioner Gadway.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We've got quite a few people in here today. As Buddy would say, it must mean something special has happened. So, if we could get those members of the Huntington High School indoor track team and their coaches to go ahead and come on up, I'd appreciate it. If you want to stop at the microphone on your way and say your names, so that way I at least have an idea of how to pronounce it.
Ian Hayes.
Come on up.
Brandon Stein.
Thomas Gorman.
Thomas Fokes.
Isaiah Andrew.
James Horning.
Nick Farber.
Aiden Walker.
Travis Hook.
Dominion Jacobs.
Xavier Daley.
David Bowlen.
Isaiah just got this.
Adam Zatonic.
Coach Hall.
Valerie Coffey.
Now, I would like to mention that normally I can look over a lot of the people in here, but you guys are now blocking off the rest of the commissioners. Congratulations to you guys for a job well done. Go ahead and read the proclamation. "Whereas, the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource. The accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. And whereas, the Huntington High School Boys Indoor Track Team, under the leadership of head coach Valerie Coffey and assistant coaches Jim Hall, Mike Hinshaw, Deb Morgan, Colin McKinney, and Adam Scrivener, won the 2022 Maryland Class 3A State Indoor Track Championship. And whereas, the members of the 2022 Huntington High School Indoor Team State Champions are Isaiah Andrews, David Bowlen, Xavier Daley, Nicholas Farber, Thomas Fokes, Thomas Gorman, Ian Hayes, Travis Hook, James Horning, Dominion Jacobs, Brandon Stein, Adam Zanatic, and Aiden Walker." Did I get everybody right so far? Pretty close? Okay. "And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners wishes to pay tribute to the dedication, many long hours of practice, and exemplary performance and accomplishments of the Huntington High School Boys Indoor Track Team. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, the sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success are hereby extended to the young men of Huntington High School Boys Indoor Track Team on winning the 2022 Maryland Class 3A State Indoor Track Championship. Be it further proclaimed, that appreciation and thanks are extended to the coaches for their guidance and encouragement to the team, given under our hands and seal this 29th day of March 2022." Congratulations. Have somebody in the middle hold that?
Now, everyone just a few inches in. Sorry, keep going, just a little. We want to get everybody in. Make sure you're not looking at the back of somebody's head. Nice, tall, young men. I want to make sure to get our permission. Don't worry about us. All right, one, two. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right. Yeah, don't run away yet. You got one more up here. If Adam, where's Adam? Step out front. All right. Adam, you get special honors, even more special today, because you get your own proclamation. I'll read this to you now. "Whereas, the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource. And whereas, the personal achievements and accomplishment of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. And whereas, Adam Zatonic of Huntington High School won the Boys Shot Put event in the 2021 and 2022 Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association, the MPSSAA Class III State Indoor Track Championship. And whereas, Adam set an indoor school record in the shot put with a throw of 58 feet, five and a quarter inches." That's a long way. And how heavy was that? Twelve pounds. Remind me not to upset you. "Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners represents this proclamation in recognition of Adam's determination and outstanding commendable accomplishments of earning the title of state champion. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that Adam Zatonic is congratulated on winning the Boys Shot Put event at the 2021 and 2022 Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association Class 3A Indoor Track Championship. Be it further proclaimed, that by this action, we commend Adam, his family, and his coaches for an outstanding year, and wish him every success in his future endeavors. Given under our hands and seal this 29th day of March 2022, signed by all five commissioners." And congratulations, Adam. And how much did you break the indoor record by? That's a lot. Congratulations again on that.
I'm Coach Hall, and I coach the throwers at Huntington High School. And Adam would not say this, but that throw was sixth all-time in Maryland history. So, he's now top-10 in all-time state history for the shot put, indoor shot put.
Good job.
And the other coaches, can you say anything?
I just want to say thank you for recognizing these excellent student athletes. And that's one thing, not only are they great athletes, but they're also excellent in the classroom. And I just want them to be recognized for that because they do a fabulous job as role models for our school. And this is actually, we're trying to figure out, do we call it a repeat? Because last year was a COVID year, so we didn't get to, and they were indoor state champions the year before. So, this is kind of a repeat performance with a little break in between. So, congratulations to them, and thank you too for recognizing them.
You're welcome. How many will be back next year? Not enough? We'll go for a three-peat. Thank you again.
Good job.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good. I hope the spring shoots. So, the next proclamation on the agenda is Commissioner Wiens.
Could Ms. Alberta Gray please come forward? Please, madam. Um, no, please. I promise I won't bite. No, ma'am.
He might sing to you, though.
He might.
It happens.
No, no. So kind. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. "Whereas, Alberta Gray, known to most as Miss Bootsy." Let, can the all present say yea again?
Yea!
All right. See, Miss Bootsy, this is fine. This is your moment, love. Yes. Let's turn around, or how about this? Let's both do this. Come this way, and then one, two, three. Together.
That was terrible.
Yes, ma'am. And you know what I do? I shouldn't say this, but just imagine everyone is topless. And it'll be fine, Miss Bootsy.
Even me, Steve. I mean, I think that'd make you lose your concentration.
"Whereas, whereas, Ms. Alberta Gray, known to most as Miss Bootsy, has dedicated over 37 years to nurturing, caring, and loving childcare for the children and community of Calver County. And whereas, after retiring from Crownsville Hospital, she brought her vision of taking care of children to life and opened Little Angels Daycare in Owings, Maryland. And whereas, Alberta has successfully groomed, taught, and prepared our next generation to excel in school. Many children that attended Little Angels Daycare have advanced in trade schools, been admitted to prestigious colleges, and earned master's degrees. Alberta also assists students who want to further their goals in childcare by providing internships and community service hours. And whereas, at the recommendation of the Calver County Minority Business Alliance, CC-MBA, the Board of County Commissioners present this proclamation, recognizing Alberta Gray's focus, determination, honesty, creativity, and her service to the community and our children. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that Alberta Gray, owner of Little Angels Daycare, is recognized for her commitment to our children and community." And you are, madam, we don't know each other, but you are a sweet woman. Yes, ma'am. I can tell. So much. "Be it further proclaimed, that March is known as Women's Sisterhood Month, and by this action, the Board of County Commissioners recommends all women who excel in creating a positive and sweet impact on Calver County, given under our hands and seal this 29th day of March 2022." I added "sweet" in there. Purposely. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Would you like to say something, or would you like to have your family members come up and have a photograph with us? Yes, of course. Please. Okay. Sister-in-law? Please come forward. Oh, that's all right. Judge. Judge Chanley, be all right. He'll be all right.
Sir, if you could come to this side. Very good. Can everyone move forward just a little bit? So, we're in line. Ms. Alberta, you can stay still. You're perfect. If everyone else can move up just to be a little bit more in line with her. All right. Beautiful smiles. Congratulations. Maybe we're just a little bit closer. Let's travel more. Beautiful. I know. Thank you very much. And do you want me to take, can you?
Oh, yeah.
That's a book my favorite. All right, wonderful. One, two, three. There you are. You're so welcome.
Steve, can everybody put their shirts back on?
Yes.
Next proclamation, Commissioner McConkey.
Good morning. I guess Christine Fenimore, you coming up? Go ahead.
It's fun trying to get a teenager to do stuff. Stand next to me.
When you figure it out, tell me how you do it.
Right. Good morning, and I put some talking points together because I know we're short for time. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Christine Fenimore. I am a Calver County employee. I'm also a mom to a son with autism. He was diagnosed at age five. He's now 16. 2022 marks the 10th year of Autism Awareness Proclamations in Calver. This is huge, and we thank you for the time on your agenda to bring awareness to our cause. Speaking of 10 years. Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech, and nonverbal communication. Autism is often accompanied by sensory medical issues such as GI disorders, seizures, sleep disorders, as well as mental health challenges like anxiety, depression, and attention disorders. According to the CDC, autism affects an estimated one in 44 children in the U.S. today. In 2013, that number was one in 88. That is a 200% increase, and I checked the math, in 10 years. And if you've met one individual with autism, you've met exactly one individual with autism. I do want to introduce my coworker who's here with us today, Kat and her son Skylar. If they want to join us at the mic or in the photo, that's fine. A few autism awareness and resources in Calver. Our first responders received training, hi, buddy? Through an organization called Pathfinders for Autism a couple years ago. Project Lifesaver is through the Sheriff's Office. If you have a fear of someone eloping or taking off, which I don't think either of these two boys do, but for every one individual that can be in this room with autism, there's probably five to 10 out there that wouldn't be able to make it into this building for one reason or another. You can call the Sheriff's Office. They have a program. They basically put you in a database, not you. Whether you have Alzheimer's or autism, the effects are the same as far as the Sheriff's Office is concerned. They put you into a database, and they know when they get the call, what to do. The Autism Project in Owings, I can't say enough good things about them. I have friends whose children have utilized their services for years, and they do everything from after-school activities to helping individuals find gainful housing and employment, because it doesn't go away when you turn 18. And of course, our beloved Drumpoint Lighthouse at the Calvert-Ryu Museum, every year lights up blue, which is one of the many colors that autism is recognized by. It's a spectrum, so I like to think of it as a spectrum of colors. Early screening and intervention is so important. If you think your son or daughter may be delayed in their development, showing signs of autism, or if you have any other concerns, talk to your pediatrician, talk to your daycare, talk to your school, and learn the signs. Autism Speaks is a great source of information, and there are others out there, to learn the early signs, screening, and resources in your community. This is Kat, who also works in planning and zoning. Her son Skylar. This is NJ. He's a 10th grader at Calver Elementary, Calver High School.
I'm glad you clarified that, because I would have never guessed that.
That's why we dress him up, so we can make sure he goes to the right school every day. I do also want to introduce Janet Stephenson, who is with the Special Education Department with Calver County Public Schools. She's gonna share a few statistics with us. And then Mark Willis may want to say a few words, because he's Mark Willis, and that's what he does.
Ooh, that was a shot.
Sorry, golf clap.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Janet Stephenson. As Christine said, I'm a supervisor for special education. Unfortunately, Dr. Harris, our Director of Special Education, was not able to be here, so she asked me to speak on her behalf and on the behalf of our department. So, I have also written a couple of notes just to make sure I can stay succinct, because I could talk forever. So, I'm trying to keep myself in check here. In Calver County Public Schools, our current data shows that 218 of our 1,673 students who receive special education services have a primary disability of autism. That's approximately 13% of the individuals who have IEPs are receiving services. services because of a disability of autism. That number is likely higher in our school system because it does not account for students who may have autism in combination with another disability, students with autism who may receive support through a five-oh-four plan, or students who do not require the support of an IEP to be successful. In Calvert County Public Schools, the majority of our students with disabilities are educated within the general education environment, and that includes our students with autism. We have decades of research supporting the benefits of instructing all students in that least restrictive environment. But what we know is that just being in the general education environment does not provide students with the supports that we need. So we have, in Calvert County Public Schools, through the Department of Special Education, have provided an extensive network of resource personnel. That would include behavior specialists, we have inclusive programming specialists, autism teacher specialists, reading specialists, math specialists, who work in conjunction to support students based on the individual supports that they need. We also have processes and plans in place so that special education and general education staff work together in the schools to be able to support students. Those are considered individual student planning meetings that can be ongoing. We have Making Action Plan Meetings, which are person-centered planning meetings that include the parents in those discussions and providing those supports. This is in addition to all the IEP meetings. We also have established collaborative planning practices so that the time general educators and special educators have together can be used successfully and meaningfully. There are students, however, whose IEP teams have determined because of extensive support needs that they need more support than can be provided in the general education setting. So we do continue to have a continuum of services to support all students. And that includes ongoing training for all teachers and instructional assistants that are in specific evidence-based teaching strategies for students with autism specifically. So again, just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity, and I'm glad we were able to be here.
Thank you for coming out. And thank all of you for what you do. And Christine, I've known you for a long time, and you've always been the biggest advocate in Calvert County for autism. We appreciate what you do. Because of you, our whole neighborhood puts blue light bulbs in thanks to you. So you bringing awareness makes a huge difference in this community. We can't thank you guys enough.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm going to read this proclamation, if you guys want to come up here. We have a special coin for each one of you.
No, it's not chocolate, don't try to bite it.
Mark, this is the second one that wanted candy, Mark, I think we have to change this up.
If you try to eat it, the county's insurance will not cover the dentist bill. Just telling you.
Yeah, we could.
All right, so whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a serious lifelong neurological disorder and is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world, autism hinders a person's ability to communicate, respond to surroundings, effectively problem-solve, and form relationships with others. Autism is referred to as a spectrum disorder because it is characterized in varying degrees by difficulties in social interactions, verbal and nonverbal communication, medical conditions in restricted and respective behaviors. Autism can be associated with intellectual disability, medical health issues and difficulties in motor, coordination, and attention. And whereas autism affects one in forty-four children and individuals irrespective of race, creed, or socioeconomic status, and not only affects the person with the disorder, but also affects their families, friends, schools, and local communities. And whereas, we recognize all the individuals and organizations in Calvert County that provide services, outreach, education, and advocacy for their important contributions to our local community, families, and individuals affected by autism. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that April 2022 be known as Autism Awareness Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we commend all those committed to providing outreach, education, advocacy, scientific research, and services to all the citizens of Calvert County, including those with developmental disabilities such as autism. We urge all citizens to join us in increasing awareness and understanding of autism spectrum disorders, given under our hands and seal this twenty-ninth day of March, 2022.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, I will say something.
You almost got out of here.
Chris sets me up because we both have an understanding of autism. My eldest grandson is on the spectrum. So he has, if you don't know anything about autism, what you have to realize is the spectrum is endless. So individuals end up on the spectrum, and you don't know what their particular situation is. My grandson has no fear of the water. So if he gets into the Pacific Ocean, and he is an excellent swimmer, he will just start swimming. And the first time I was out there with my daughter, I said, I'm going to go down and watch the boys, and she said, no, there needs to be two of us. I said, I think I could watch two little boys, and she said, no, you can't, because one likes to play on the beach and the other likes to swim to Hawaii. So my background is in early childhood development, but I will tell you, back when I got my degree was a couple of years ago. Autism might have been mentioned in the textbook, but not like it is today. So what we know of this particular situation today is unlike anywhere we've been in the past. And we keep making progress. So California, for example, is light-years ahead of the state of Maryland in what they do for folks on the autism spectrum. So we need to keep making that progress and keep helping those children because they grow up to be us. And we have a couple of young folks here today with autism, but they're going to be productive citizens tomorrow based on what we do today. So congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
And did I, am I getting my socks this year? Am I getting my socks this year?
I think they still make your size. I skipped over mentioning therapeutic services, which is offered through Calvert County Parks and Recreation. They have a ton of wonderful programs, camps, swimming lessons for those that need it. NJ has taken swimming lessons through therapeutic services as well as regular gold old swimming lessons. He can swim, he's not going to sink, but he did the same thing when he was two. He barreled headfirst into the ocean because he didn't understand exactly what the ocean was going to do. So thank you again, Commissioners. Happy Tuesday. I got to get back to work.
So the next proclamation we have is Commissioner Hartz. Good morning, do we have anybody here this morning? For this? I'm sorry, oh, thank you, buddy. For the Interagency Council for Families and Children?
Sorry, I thought I had one more to go. I'm sorry. Good morning, Commissioners, Julie Machino, Coordinator for the Family Network. I'm here today on behalf of members of the Calvert County Interagency Council and the Early Childhood Advisory Council to recognize April as the month of the young child. For generations, kindergarten was considered the beginning of a child's learning, but we now know that's no longer the case. Research demonstrates that the period from birth through age five is when children develop language, thinking, physical, and social-emotional skills that they'll use throughout their lives. During these years, every experience that a child has helps to create their brain's architecture. To this end, the quality of a child's preschool experiences can be a key predictor for their success in school and life. In Calvert County, we're fortunate to have several high-quality early childhood programs that serve our community. With me today are representatives from two of those programs. Diana Adams, the Program Coordinator for the Hippie Healthy Families and Parents as Teachers Program, and Kelly Hutter, who's the Executive Director of the Promise Resource Center. Both programs have received funding through the Board of County Commissioners and have made significant contributions to the lives of young children and their families in Calvert. Today, Ms. Adams and Ms. Hutter will share some information with you about their programs, and it's our hope that you'll share this information with others and that all young children in Calvert County receive the quality care, education, and experiences they deserve. So first up, we'll have Ms. Diana Adams.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just have a few prepared remarks. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for having me here today as we proclaim, as we mark the proclamation for Month of the Young Child. My name is Diana Adams, and I have the distinct pleasure to serve as a Program Coordinator for three nationally-recognized home visiting programs here in Calvert County. Healthy Families Calvert County, Parents as Teachers, as we call it, PAT, and Home Instruction for Parents of Preschool Youngsters, or HIPPI. Started in 1999, the programs are evidence-based, and they have all been successfully reaccredited each year. We're currently serving families in Calvert County. The program serves families prenatal to age five. We provide a continuum of services for the families here. Families can join us prenatally in the Healthy Families Program or the PAT Program, and they have the option to stay with us until they're ready to go to school with the HIPPI Program at age five. The purpose of Healthy Families Calvert County is to provide supportive home visits to teens and first-time parents either prenatally or at birth, and it's on a voluntary basis as outlined and defined by Healthy Families America's twelve critical elements. Healthy Families America is also a part of Prevent Child Abuse America. From birth to age three, the program focuses on parents' education of child's growth and development, parent-child interaction, and increasing parent and child bonding. Families can join our program at this point, and our PAT Program also serves families outside of our HFA model. At age three, the families can transition to our HIPPI Program to get their child ready for school. Our goal is to empower our parents to be their child's first teacher, not when they get to school. Currently, HIPPI's program is one of two programs in the entire state of Maryland and the only one in Southern Maryland. And we've been here since 1999, just keep that in mind. Healthy Family serves up to twenty-eight families, Parents as Teachers serves up to fifteen families, and HIPPI, we serve up to a hundred and ten families, and that is growing. Our eligible program, I'm sorry, eligible families are referred to our program through a myriad of partners such as the Calvert County Health Department, the Judith P. Hoyer Early Learning Centers at PAT and in Calvert Elementary, Head Start, Infants and Toddlers, Child Find, and other programs. The fundings for these programs come from a variety of sources, Maryland State Department of Education, the Governor's Office for Children, United Way, and partnerships with the Judy Centers and Head Start. We've been level-funded since 1999. Our programs are the hidden gems in this community. We don't want to stay hidden anymore. We're here today to let you all know about the resources we have in our community and how young children in Calvert are served through early education grants. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to share a little bit about the programs I serve. Thank you. Oh, and I did bring swag bags for the Commissioners.
Good morning, I'm Kelly Hutter, I'm the Executive Director of the Promise Resource Center. First, I want to start by thanking you all for your continued support in the realm of early childhood, but also for the Promise Resource Center. We receive funding from you all each year for our in-home Novo Parenting Program, which works with at-risk families who are involved in DSS or the court systems. So through that program, we help them to either remain the placement of their children in their home, or to help them reunify with their children if they've been placed into foster care. We are also the childcare center, Resource Center for the region. PRC provides core of knowledge classes childcare providers need to maintain their licenses. As the Resource Center, we also provide onsite coaching to assist providers with credentialing, accreditation, and Maryland excels. Most recently, we are adding a position that will assist families in our region to find appropriate, safe childcare utilizing Locate Child Care, as well as to assist them in applying for childcare scholarships. The agency receives funding from the Maryland State Department of Education to provide infant and early childhood mental health support services to children in licensed childcare. This service focuses on children birth to five who are exhibiting challenging behaviors in the childcare setting. Research has indicated how important these first five years are for social-emotional development, leading to success in school and general health and well-being. Infant and early childhood mental health services have been shown to reduce suspensions and expulsions, improve children's social skills, reduce challenging behavior, and reduce parent and provider stress, among other benefits. We also connect these children to resources and referrals needed before they even enter the public school system, so hopefully to prevent them from having challenging behaviors once they do enter public school. Most recently, PRC has added the Family Support Center of Southern Maryland. The Family Support Center serves families with children ages birth to three as well as expectant parents living in Southern Maryland. There is no income requirement for these services, and all services are free. So we can expect, or we can accept any family that would like to come. So there's certain core services that are involved with this. One is a self-sufficiency programming. So these are educational services and activities that promote parental resilience, provide support in times of need, and increase social connections. So these are services are like resume building, financial literacy classes, workforce development. We also offer a parent, an adult, health and education classes. So these are parenting skills, but also GED, ESL classes, help with substance abuse, nutrition, family planning, mental health, and much more. While these parents are attending these classes, there is free onsite childcare in a child development center, where there's developmentally appropriate care that supports growth of children and family. We do screenings at that time, too. We also have service coordination, linking, services linking support, identifying strengths and goal-setting for positive change. Most recently, we helped a family who was being evicted, and so, and they didn't have anywhere to go. So we worked with local, the local counties to find them housing. And then for our parents who cannot come to the center, we provide many of the same services through our home visiting program. So you don't have to come to us for the services, we can come to you. We also encourage parent support and involvement with skills and relationships outside of the center. And this includes parents advisory boards, basic life skills, recreation opportunities for leadership development of our families. We don't do this alone. We, to provide the full range of services required, we have partnered with a number of our local agencies and organizations. And some of the services that are being offered through our agency but by other agencies are mental health services, family birthing classes, infant toddler support. We are also in the process of adding a food pantry to our location. So as you can see, over the years, PRC has evolved to keep up with the needs and demands of our families in our region. And I just wanted to thank you for your continued support, again, for our families of young children, for my agency, and for all that you do for our families. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Is anybody else, or if you guys want to come on down? Good seeing you. Well, before I read this, boy, what you said times ten, and you know, you mentioned something about the role of the parent early on as the first teacher. And so I was never really raised around any babies or anything like that, and so when we had our daughter, I don't know anything, you know, I mean, I'm like, okay, what, I have no idea what to expect. And I remember going to daycare, and Lexi was probably about two months old, and she heard the sound of my voice, and her arms and legs started kicking, and I was blown away. I had never experienced anything like that in my life, and from that day on, she truly owned me and changed my life, it really did. I didn't, I didn't understand the impact, you know, of what a parent, you know, I'd never been in that, and then I can remember, you know, when she was learning to walk, holding her hand and walking, and the bond that we even have today. And it's, you're so right, it's so important as the first teacher, you know, it changed how I looked at so many things that she was going to be having a front row seat watching what I do and what her mother does. what I do and what her mother does. And how soon we forget that, you know, once that child's born, hey, you've got to step your game up. I mean, you know, this, you know, what you might have liked in the past, there's somebody watching, and they're learning and taking their cues from you, and you're so spot on. I mean, you can see the theme of today, it's been about children. There's nothing more important than that. There really isn't. I mean, when you look in their face, the only way to get messed up is when we do it, you know? I mean, they're just really so, I can't thank you enough, you know, it's so important, and so, let me read this, says, "Whereas, many Calvert County organizations, including the Interagency Council for Families and Children of Calvert County Public Schools and Calvert County Early Childhood Advisory Council, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Month of the Young Child in April 22. And whereas these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our youngest citizens during the time when they experience the most rapid brain development. And whereas participation in high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayers' dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, live healthier lives, and earn higher wages as adults. And whereas the future of our community depends upon the quality of early childhood experiences to provide to our young children. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that April 22 be known as Month of the Young Child in Calvert County. Urging all residents to recognize and support the needs of young children in our community. Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of County Commissioners commends all children serving, excuse me, all child-serving organizations for consistently demonstrating superior initiative, leadership ability, and support the commitment to the children in our communities, thereby strengthening families and improving outcomes for the Calvert County children, given under our hands and seal this 29th day of March 22nd. Signed by all five county commissioners."
If you may just hold that.
[applause]
Everyone can just shift the step this way. Perfect. Here, good, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Information about all of our programs in the papers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
So everyone, you know, almost every week we do proclamations to recognize the programs that exist in our community and the excellent services that they provide, you know, and it's, it's, it's sitting in this chair, you know, I learn something new every Tuesday when I'm in here, and I hope that we promote these programs, Mr. Administrator, out as much as we can, so people know that they do exist and help is there to guide you and help you through, because as Commissioner Hart says, you know, I didn't grow up around anything like that, have no knowledge, and in this job, you know, you learn things and try to continue to learn, and so when you hear these programs, the excellent work that these individuals are doing, sometimes they're not paid, they're volunteering, it's quite heartwarming to know that we live in a community that looks out for each other like they do. So just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to promote the programs out, so people know that help is there.
Commissioners, one of the things that, one of the actions that we take is to create a podcast of what we say here today, so we can put that message out through our social media, our communications media relations as a routine, but also we can do that periodically just to get, continue to get that word out.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is public hearing, Department of Finance and Budget,
It's nice having you every week, Edie.
I was going to say, Edie, you're getting used to this now, right?
Yeah.
We'll have to get you a special parking place.
For a minute there, I thought we hired you to work for us or something.
Yeah, nameplate, there you go.
I feel special. It's always good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, again. I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. I'll go ahead and read the memo. Background: In October of 2021, negotiations were held between the Board of Education and the bus driver contractors, and an agreement was reached to provide the following concessions: An eight-hour workday; to increase our salary rates; to establish future cost-of-living increase based on CPI; and that all other items initially on the negotiation list be discussed at a future date. Discussion: The Board of, the budget adjustment of this amount needs to be accounted for for fiscal year 2022 budget in order to fund the BOE. The budget adjustment requires a public hearing because it's an excess of $150,000. Fiscal impact: If approved, this amends the adopted budget for FY 2022 to appropriate and allocate $1.3 million to the Board of Education for the bus driver contract and uses recordation tax as a revenue source. Conclusion: Staff recommends, after taking public comment, the Board of County Commissioners close the record and approve Budget Adjustment 181 and request adoption of the related budget This is a public hearing. The public hearing is required by the Calvert County Code of Public Local Laws. This hearing has been duly advertised, and there is a certification of publication in our files that constitutes the record of this hearing. The county has adopted guidelines for conducting a public hearing as detailed in Resolution 6-89. If you would like to sign up for the public hearing, to my right, there is a sign-up sheet. If you are watching or listening on the county website and you wish to comment via telephone call, there are instructions on the homepage under "Upcoming Events/Public Hearings." If you are speaking as an individual, there's a two-minute time limit, and if you are speaking as a designated representative of an organization, you're allowed five minutes.
Thank you. There is one caller as well. We're going to ask the caller with last four, well, if the caller wishes to provide public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joe Cormier, and I'd like to speak in support of this. A school day begins and ends with the bus drivers. They deserve a living wage, a sustainable wage, they deserve an eight-hour pay for what they do, even though they're working 12, 15 hours a day, so please support this measure. Thank you so much.
Daryl, is there a hand raised? No hands. Very good. So Edie, it was mentioned in the memo, and when all this took place, we understood there were some items still outstanding. Have those items been addressed since?
There was a list of items which included increasing various components of the pay to bus contractors, including salary for drivers. Based on a CPI factor, we have resolved that we're using the Washington-Arlington-Alexandria CPI factor, same as the state uses, and I believe the same CPI table that you use as well. We also have increased the contributions to the Benefits Trust. That was about a 20% increase per route, so that is one of the items that is off the table at this point. We have also agreed to have at least one meeting a year where we hear from the third-party administrator for the Benefits Trust to provide us with updates on how the trust is doing, what the needs are. We also have our consultant, who works with us on our health insurance plan, as part of that meeting, and he weighs in to provide us with information, and we had a meeting back in January, I believe, which was very beneficial, and that led to an increase for next year, a significant increase for next year to the trust. But we'll be monitoring the status of the trust, because we pay a contribution for each route, not necessarily per driver. So whether there is a driver who accepts or participates in the plan or not, we make a contribution to the trust for that route. But we understand that costs increase for that trust, as they do for other things. So we're just monitoring and working, collaborating with the contractors and drivers, as a matter of fact, to stay abreast of what's happening with the trust. We've also reached agreement on increasing the amount of sick leave that the drivers get. Currently, they get three or four days a year, depending on years of experience. We've increased that to five days per year. However, with that increase to five days, the drivers are to accrue their sick leave. Past practice has been that if they don't use it, they get paid for it at the end of the fiscal year, but we understand the importance of a driver having that sick leave bank available to them if they have surgery, or if they have a relative who gets sick. So we have recently agreed to drivers being able to accrue their sick leave, which is a significant benefit to them.
And I only ask this question, we don't want to end up in the same situation we were in last year, think that, you know, got highlighted very quickly how important the bus drivers are, getting our children to and from school, and so we just want to make sure that those items have been addressed, and so we don't end up back in that situation again, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Edie answered it all with all that, got it.
And right now, I believe the last time I asked, we are pretty much full-staffed on drivers currently?
We budgeted for about 152 routes. At last count, we were about 146, so we're still down about six routes compared to the prior year, but that is always subject to change based on needs, particularly with special education or temporary routes, but we're pretty close to where we were before.
So maybe we can coordinate with our HR department to make sure we get the word out about the vacancies and opportunities for employment?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Did the new software program help with the routes and being able to actually reduce any of the buses that were out there that, I know that when they got the software, they were, they were going to be able to find the fastest routes and all that good stuff, and so that they may be able to get rid of a bus or two.
So I believe you're talking about the VersaTran software that they use for routing, and that was one of the outcomes, having to, on the fly, reduce routes. But we're looking at the capacity of our buses right now, and are our students getting to school on time? So that may result in a few additional buses going back on the road, but at this time, I think transportation is still looking to have maximum efficiency with our routes. We're still waiting to see. At this point, we have still quite a few parents driving students to school, and we don't know if that will change as we return to what we're going to consider our new normal. We'll have to wait and see what the new year brings, but we are looking to see if we can save a couple of routes.
The tracking is nice. That's really nice, because you can tell, you know, okay, the bus is going to be here in 10 minutes, 15, I mean, you know, so if there's bad weather, or, you know what I mean, it's, so that was a great piece put in there.
Yes, the Senovia GPS system, yes. It has been very beneficial to our school-based staff, as well as to parents, because parents and staff can check to see where the bus is.
Carolyn's on it every morning, every morning.
Yes.
Very good.
You got a motion?
Is there a motion?
Motion, man.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, that we close the record and approve Budget Adjustment 181 and request adoption of the related budget resolution.
Second.
Motion, the second, that we close the record, approve and adopt the budget adjustment 181 as submitted, and sign the related resolution. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Edie.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. So your adoption just now, does that also apply to our request to increase our operating budget, or is that a separate item?
That would be a separate item.
Okay. So that'll be on a future agenda.
That way you can come back again next week.
This just addresses yours, then you have to do yours.
Thanks. We do have one next week for them.
Yes.
Can you get a plate, can you get a plate with her name made up, please?
The good try. You have to.
Just like you said, you learn something every day.
Every day. Next item on the agenda is awards.
Good morning. If you would like to start?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who don't know me, which is not many in this room, I'm Victoria Bascher, Recreation Assistant Coordinator for Parks and Recreation, and I'm here today as a member of the Employee Recognition Committee to introduce to you the Calvert County Government's March 2022 Employee of the Month. For those of you who don't know, the Employee of the Month Award acknowledges individual excellence for superior job performance or special individual efforts in the following areas: Effectiveness of public contact, respect of fellow employees, quality and/or quantity of work, contributions towards improving organizational morale, and actions that improve the county's public image. Anyone can nominate a coworker for this award, and we highly encourage you to do so. Please check out the ERC webpage on the county internet for more information. Without further ado, our March 2022 Employee of the Month is naturalist Tanya Gale, the Natural Resources Division of Calvert County Parks and Recreation Department. Tanya, please join the Commissioners up front. If you want to go up there, I'll read, or if you want to stay back here, it doesn't matter.
Does that promise to hold? Good morning. How are you?
She's so shy. Mark warned me about that. He said she's shy. We could pull that information out.
Tanya Gale has been a naturalist since 2000. Her main responsibilities focus on teaching environmental education programs for the schools and families, as well as leading summer camps. The division runs approximately 300 chesspacks school field trips, which, for those of you who don't know, the chesspacks field trips tie directly into student service learning hours, which are required for graduation, so they are very important to the school system. She also helps with 130 public nature programs and a dozen summer camps each year. Over the past year, Tanya took on the responsibility of training hourly and substitute naturalists and coordinating their schedules to make sure we had the best staff for the programs. Tanya teaches herself approximately a quarter of these programs as well. She developed a process for writing the program descriptions and planning objectives. She coordinates several goal-setting meetings, holds regular check-ins, and observes and evaluates the teaching skills of others. Tanya oversees the summer counselor and counselor-in-training positions and the education internship program. She created position descriptions and training materials and planned a summer camp for the interns to teach and demonstrate the skills they had learned in the course of their internships. The partnership she forged with St. Mary's College has been a great source of interns interested in education and the environment. She trains and schedules volunteers who help teach the third and fifth grade chesspacks environmental education programs. She also maintains the native plant garden at the Battle Creek Nature Center, working with volunteers and local garden clubs during planting and weeding workdays. She is developing interpretive signs that will get installed later this year as well. Tanya works to promote the division and the natural world with Linda Jones, who is the Calvert County Parks and Recreation Marketing and Special Events Coordinator, and our Calvert Nature Society. Her skills in photography, video editing, and her exquisite descriptions of plants, animals, and the world around us really helps to engage audiences well beyond the programs in the parks. Her coworkers appreciate that Tanya is organized and creates exciting programs, workshops, and camps. She does a great job of making the division look professional. Tanya is a dedicated and tireless naturalist, always striving to learn more and to share her love of nature with everyone. And as someone who also works in Calvert County Parks and Recreation on the rec side, I've worked with Tanya as well to coordinate collaborations between the two, which have been very successful. So thank you, Tanya, from me, and in addition to me who just spoke, I believe there are some other people here who would like to say a few words. So Karen Molinas, who is the Division Chief for Natural Resources, Shannon Nizal, who is our director, and then afterwards, if Tanya, you would like to say anything, you're more than welcome, the mic will be yours, okay?
Your job could be in trouble. I think there's a challenger here.
I warned you of Tori earlier today. We're both in shyness awareness training.
Between me, you, and her, there's no-
Between me, you, and her, there's no air left in the building because we just took it off.
Yeah, I'm Karen Molinas. I'm the Division Chief for Natural Resources, and it was really my privilege to nominate Tanya for Employee of the Month. She really is quite a naturalist. It's really, you know, the description kind of gives you the facts and figures, but you really have to be there to watch Tanya in action, to see the response that the visitors have working with her. Even this morning with the students, you know, one of those was what? Our, one of our counselors was in that crowd, and, you know, he was very excited to see that Tanya was there, too. So it's really my privilege to, to work with her, and as I think that the nomination says a lot. So thank you, Tanya, for, for everything you do.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Nizall, Director of Parks and Recreation. What can I say about Tanya? I mean, she's amazing. She does so much with the Department for Natural Resources. Her breadth of knowledge is, is just so expansive, and she puts a lot of it in layman's terms so people like me can understand what plant she's talking about or what animal she's talking about. And the, the comments and compliments that, that I hear in regards to the programs that she runs and the folks that she work with, works with, the students she's worked, working with, they just have nothing but great things to say about Tanya. And, and she just does a, a great job. And congratulations, Tanya. This is much deserved.
This is her show, not mine.
I don't think I can add anything. I think it's gone. So let me give you this. And the most important thing, as Commissioner Nutter always said, is everybody?
The check.
The check.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, Mark, you could be in trouble there.
I know. That's why I transferred. I don't plan anything.
I love it. I love it. Very good.
Ooh, a throwdown. The reward Department of Human Resources.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Deana Davis, Human Resource Deputy Director. Thank you for the opportunity today to celebrate your claims team. I'll take a second to introduce everyone and ask them to, to head up front. First is Anita Marr with the Fleet Maintenance Division in the Department of Public Works.
Hi, Mr. Anita. Good morning.
Morning.
Jamie Angus, Risk Management Assistant with the Department of Human Resources. Michelle Langham, Risk Management Specialist with the Department of Human Resources. Dan Baker, Safety Officer with Human Resources. And unable to join us today is Ellen Simpson, our Risk Manager. I know that she is watching us online now. She is the leader of this team for sure. Local Government Insurance Trust, or Legit, is the county's liability and property insurer. Annually, they identify organizations for excellence in claims management. This year, 2021, award was awarded to Calvert County for exhibiting exemplary efforts and effectively processing claims. Our goal is to reduce the time that a claim remains open by working to resolve it quickly and assisting the Legit Claims Investigative Team with any questions or issues that come up. On behalf of Human Resources Director Melanie Woodson and myself, I want to thank the Claims Team for a job well done. We appreciate your hard work and dedication. Just a little bit of information about claims. In fiscal year 2021, we had 156 liability claims that this team worked on to process quickly and effectively. Thank you.
on the line. I would just like to thank you all very much for making the county look good. We know all of your work is behind the scenes, and a lot of the time, people don't understand what it is that you do. But the citizens and the Commissioners could know that you are allowing us to be good stewards of taxpayers' money, and we are keeping our employees safe. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, this is interesting because it's an award that the, the county gets as a whole from Legit, but these are the individuals that make that happen for you on your behalf.
Mark, would you like to get up there? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Danny, you representing us? It's month of the women. I'm surprised they let you in.
Thirty-five years of training.
How many years of being married?
You always get the last word, right?
I was just checking how long it took her to train. So the next item on the agenda is appointments. The first appointment is for the Calver County Family Network. We have one resignation, and they have recommended Kristen Temple, and we have one reappointment for Deborah Harris.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Kristen Temple from the Second District, and we reappoint Deborah Harris. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let the record show Commissioner Hart is out of the room. The next is for the Huntington Architectural Review Committee. We have a reappointment for Frank B. Arbusto Jr. and a reappointment for Daryl Hatcher.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second that we reappoint Frank Arbusto Jr. and Daryl Hatcher to the Huntington Architectural Review Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next is for the Owings Town Center Architectural Review Committee. It's a reappointment for Brian M. Lizardcik.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Brian, Brian Lizardcik to the Owings Town Center Architectural Review Committee. I apologize if I screwed up your name. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Let's see, and I think this is the last one. For the Lesby Town Center Architectural Review Committee, we have one reappointment for Christine M. McNellis.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to reappoint Christine M. McNellis to the Lesby Town Center Architectural Review Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. The last one, I believe, is for the Heritage Committee, and it's a, a point due to resignation, it's the appointment of Esther Reamer, District Two.
A second.
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Esther Reamer from District Two to the Heritage Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item one is Department of Public Safety, St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department. Deputy Director Jeffries, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Al Jeffrey, Deputy Director of Public Safety. We bring before you today an apparatus grant for the St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department, Company Seven, for the purchase of an ambulance 78. St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Company Seven, is requesting a seven hundred, uh, 300, sorry about that, $373,000 fire rescue apparatus grant for the purchase of an ambulance. In order to apply for this grant, St. Leonard Volunteer Fire Rescue Company Seven adopted by resolution, formal procurement procedures, procurement committee standards, contract administration policies. Apparatus specifications received the approval of the Chief's Council, the Fire Rescue EMS Association, and the Fire and Rescue Commission. Finally, the company has agreed to a promissory note through which the grant funding would be repaid through the service of over eight years. The county will receive a security deed of trust that will complement the promissory note. Fiscal impact is 373,000 requested is included in the fiscal year 22 capital budget for the purchase of an ambulance. The recommendation is staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company Seven's apparatus grant request for the replacement of Ambulance 78 and authorize the Board President to sign the fire and rescue apparatus grant agreement.
Discussion? So Al, I was amazed, and I was in the fire service for a long time, but the last time we went through one of these, the stretcher, these new self-loading stretchers, is it 20 or $25,000?
So we bought two for 80,000. So they're about thirty, in between 30 and 40,000 each, self-loading, the self-loading stretchers.
Phew. But when I was in the fire department, we had to go help them lift patients in and out.
They were manual, they were manual stretchers when we were in the department, yeah.
Are they flip resistant? Because I know back in the day, a lot of them...
So there's a lot of safety features built into these new stretchers, and one of them is it'll stop if it detects any imbalances or anything, saves your back injuries, joint injuries, ankles, knees, hips, shoulders, backs.
It's just amazing the cost of everything. I mean, that's just, yeah.
I mean, just look when they roll that stretcher out of that ambulance, there's 40 grand sitting right there.
But that's the biggest thing when somebody gets hurt, you know, they can't be moved. They gotta be, stay still.
And that's one piece of equipment that we carry on a modern ambulance that we, we didn't have when we were in the service.
I didn't mean to digress, but it's still, still sticks in my head. That's crazy.
Go back to Pop Pop and the Studebaker. I mean, you know, to where we are today.
Old Cadillac ambulances.
Oh, yeah. We digress. Any discussion? Motion?
Motion to approve the St. Leonard Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company Seven's apparatus grant request for the replacement of Ambulance 78 and authorize the Board President to sign the fire and rescue apparatus grant agreement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we approve the St. Leonard Company Seven and ambulance apparatus grant request. Any discussion on that motion?
Only, on a macro level, is it still true, Al, we're at 85% for EMS roughly globally?
Roughly, our call volume runs about in between 80 and 85% call volume, yes.
And then from St. Leonard South, it's 60?
Is about 60% of that 80%, yes.
Sir. Just...
So for every 100 calls, 60, 60 of them are south of Prince Frederick.
That's all.
And we currently have three ambulances in Solomon's Firehouse, and they all stay on the road pretty much all the time.
Almost 24/7.
And we have another senior center coming.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
So, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda under new business, Department of Planning and Zoning, Historic Preservation Tax Credit, TC 2020-07. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Christopher Spurling, Historic Preservation Planner. So, background. Calver County offers
a 25% tax credit for eligible restoration done on structures located within designated historic districts or designated as historic landmarks by the county or municipalities. The county's tax credit program is described in Chapter 136 of the Code of Calver County. Discussion. The Dorothy Marie Hill House was designated a Calver County Historic District by the Calver County Board of County Commissioners by a county resolution in 2020 under the case number HD 2000-02. The Dorothy Marie Hill House is located at 14332 Sedwick Avenue, Solomon's, Maryland, is shown on Tax Assessor's Map 44B as parcel 128 and is owned to historic overlay. It is owned by Amanda Louise Comer and Philip Christopher Comer. In June 2020, Mr. and Mrs. Comer submitted historic area work permit and preliminary tax credit applications to the Historic District Commission for labor and materials to replace vinyl siding with more historically appropriate wood siding at the Dorothy Marie Hill Historic District. In February 2020, Mr. Comer submitted the proofs of payment to the contractor for eligible expenses in the amount of $30,810 and documented satisfactory completion of the work, meeting the reporting standards set by the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission reviewed the documentation at their February 9, 2022 meeting and voted unanimously to submit the request to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. The documents which are attached have been incorporated into the permanent file of the Dorothy Marie Hill Historic District in the Department of Planning and Zoning. Fiscal impact. The property tax bill for 14332 Sedwick Avenue, tax account number 01-012398 will be reduced by $7,702.50. Recommendation. The Historic District Commission recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the tax credit for $7,702.50, which is 25% of the eligible expenses. I can take any questions.
I don't see any.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the tax credit for $7,702.50, which is 25% of the eligible expenses. Second.
Have a motion and a second that we approve the request for the tax credit. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a work session with Department of Planning and Zoning, draft historic...
Hey, welcome back. Morning, Commissioners.
I like how you left and came back. It's all dramatic.
It's about the entry.
Yes, yeah.
And you are?
Oh, sorry. I'm Christopher Spurling, Historic Preservation Planner and Planning and Zoning. Background. In fiscal year 2020, the Maryland Historical Trust awarded the Department of Planning and Zoning a certified local government grant to revise the Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines. The document provides the historic district owners guidelines with appropriate approaches and materials for restoration and rehabilitation, and is used by the Historic District Commission when considering historic area work permits and historic preservation tax credits. The current guidelines were approved and adopted in 2001. Discussion. In the more than 20 years since the adoption of the current guidelines, several changes have occurred in the approaches to historic preservation. This includes the development of new materials that more closely approximate historic materials, climate change, sea level rise, the emergence of telecommunications, and the increasing use of alternative energies such as solar and geothermal. The revised guidelines will consider these advancements as they apply to the preservation of historic districts in Calver County and update the guidance to reflect current trends in the field. The Calver County Historic District Commission approved the revised guidelines at a regular meeting held on September 8, 2021. Fiscal impact, none. Staff time used as a match for the grant was previously allocated. Grant funds were used to contract services from the firm of Murphy and Dittenhofer Architects. The Historic Preservation Tax Credit remains unchanged. Recommendation. The current guidelines are outdated. Staff recommends advancing the Calver County Historic District Design Guidelines to a work session with the Planning Commission to begin the public adoption process. I have a brief presentation if the Commissioners would allow.
Sure. Sure.
Oh. Okay, thank you. So the historic district guidelines. So, um, the creation of historic districts was, or is currently provided for in chapter fifty-seven of the county code. The first historic district in Calvert County was Patuxent Manor in nineteen seventy-four. The most recent historic district pressing on the Patuxent, twenty nineteen. Throughout the county, there are ninety-five historic districts, and this map will give you an idea of how much they vary, not only in size, but in distribution across the county. A fiscal year nineteen ninety-nine CLG grant funded the original guidelines, the ones that are currently in use. These guidelines provide detailed guidance both to homeowners as well as to the Historic District Commission in adjudicating both historic area work permits and tax credit applications. Current guidelines address important features, context site, rehabilitation, new construction additions, new site features, rehabilitation of commercial buildings, and disability access. These were adopted in two thousand and one. Just as a reminder for everyone here, other things that happened in two thousand and one. Two thousand and one, we elected this man president for his first term. And this was a cellphone. Since two thousand and one, we've seen the advancement of, of new energies, alternative energies, telecommunications. This is new technologies in preservation using three-dimensional scanners to scan objects so that if there were any damage, it can be repaired to essentially original. And we have the effects of sea level rise. This is not in Calvert County, this is Tangier Island. But this is the cemetery on the island, which is eroding into the sea. I can tell you from personal experience, this is currently happening here. I took a call on President's State Weekend from the Sheriff's Department because we had erosion, and it did result in human remains appearing on a beach along the Patuxent, so. With the revised guidelines, they've been updated to be more user-friendly. These are designed to be online. They have hot links that are going through. One of the most convenient things is that the glossary of definitions is put right up front. So you're not shuffling in the back, it's right up front, and it is more comprehensive than the previous. It further increases accessibility. As a person who came from a park system, I can tell you that I was very involved with ADA and particularly ADA on historic structures, and I, I find that this is a really important thing that we still need to work towards to provide better access to our disabled. Alternative materials, various technologies, and also climate change mitigation are addressed in this. Were not addressed in previous. So the revised guidelines as far as process, they were advanced by the Historic District Commission at their September regular meeting. And I would like to say that that was after a process. Our, our committee that reviewed it consisted of staff as well as historic district commissioners, and when they reviewed it, they provided comments that not only were significant and substantial, but created a better document. I think that speaks very highly of the individuals that serve on the Historic District Commission, that they were able to contribute to this contractor. Next steps. If the commission forwards it at this meeting, it will go to a work session with the Planning Commission. Provided they approve, it will then go to Board for final approval at a public hearing. Finally, there will be a resolution that would negate the previous resolution and would adopt these as the guidelines for the Historic District Commission. If you have any questions, I'll entertain them now.
So you're actually gonna allow solar panels on roofs of historic buildings?
Solar panels, probably not. There are also ways, however. Recently, we had a case where they were looking at solar panels, and one of the things that we really consider is not just the impact to the structure, but is the view from, is the public view. So if you can achieve the placement that you need for your solar panels in a way that is not visible from public right-of-way, then that would be something the Historic District Commission would consider.
Cause the picture in the slide had solar, and I was surprised if you were gonna allow.
Yeah.
Those were actually the historic solar panels.
We're getting to a point where that is conceivable.
Well, that's gonna bring me to a question to John, because I know that's a very touchy area in there of the kens and can do's and cannots. Any type of modern stuff, does that void any type of adoption? I know, and I, I remember there was one where it was discrepancy of something, how the place was in the thirties or something, and then later in the eighties, they added a pool, and then there was a big, you know, fight about that. Well, that voided it because there was no pool back then. Can any of that be challenged from anything?
Commissioner John Norris, County Attorney. A lot of that depends on what rules are in effect at the time.
Okay, so it doesn't affect anything in the past?
There may be a time at which modern technology like solar panels are required.
Okay.
As opposed to not just allowed.
Got you.
So all of that's taken into consideration by the Historic District Commission when they weigh whether or not a project should come in and whether it should stay in the historic.
Cause my Commissioner handsome, like, you know, you're walking through, say, Old Williamsburg and go, oh, they had solar panels back then, huh?
And these changes, the guidelines are, I don't know how to phrase my question. There's no unintended consequences here.
That's what I was looking for, yeah.
That, uh, will pop up later, you know, we get accused of changing rules, regulations, guidelines, making it twice as hard, more expensive. This, this, the, these changes are not gonna impact in that way?
No, sir.
Okay.
It really is mainly to bring them up to current standards as far as the preservation field and to consider things that just weren't considerations twenty years ago.
It sounds good. Especially when I saw the solar panels on the roof.
I'm a proponent of geothermal. We had geothermal put in our last house, and it's a price upfront, but it's, it's a fantastic technology.
It is a little pricey.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think when they did Northern High School, they drilled like three hundred wells or something crazy number.
So this is just a work session, there's no action on our behalf, so thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Are you coming back for the next presentation?
He might, it's a public comment.
I can if you'd like.
You can tell us what's on your mind. Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you. If there's anybody in the room that would like to provide public comment, please make your way to the microphone. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted rules to maintain the order and decorum and keeping with the dignity of the governmental process. A copy of Resolution six dash eighty-nine is found here to my right. The Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who wish to influence policy and are required, and are required, may be required to register in advance if they participate as lobbyists. There is one caller on the line, zero three six eight. If you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand, and we will get to you after we finish with callers in the room. If you please identify yourself and whether you're speaking as the designated representative of a group or as an individual. Yes?
Good morning Commissioners, Joseph Cormier. I'll be speaking on behalf of Calvert County Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee this morning. Thank you for recognizing Autism Awareness Month. My oldest child is on the autism spectrum, and it's been a huge journey in the last ten years how things have changed. My printer died, so pardon me as I try to read my chicken scratch here. Thank you for recognizing all the early childhood programs this morning. The public-private partnership is key to the success for the things that we're gonna do. The Blueprint for Maryland's Education is gonna increase duty centers and other pre-K programs for students, so we need to be watching on that. I did wanna address last week's discussion. It was a little concerning for me, the way that the conversation was framed, and I don't wanna call anybody out, but I wanna make sure that we're cognizant of how we're speaking about our students with disabilities. When we say a sixteen-year-old teenage boy with behaviors that limit him to only carry a crayon, it's concerning. When we talk about, you know, are what are the other students being exposed to, or are the other kids losing out on? Staffing continues to be an ongoing concern for all of our schools. When some students need that one-to-one aid, and those aids are pulled to cover, when we can't find a substitute teacher, that's a concern. When we look back in fifty years, we're gonna say whoops about inclusion. I hope that, you know, what we do is we look back and find the ways that we can do it better. When MSD and MDH and other federal Department of Educations, in an effort to create safeguards, send down these arbitrary percentages of how long a student needs to be in general education, it cannot take into account the individual situations in the school. PAC might have kids that just can't be in gen ed a hundred percent of the day, but the district still gets dinged because it's not happening. How much are we spending on legal counsel and fees when parents reach the point where they have to make a state complaint or go to a due process claim? How much money is spent on tuition and transportation for students who are placed out of county? We have students who are at Kennedy Krieger every day of the week. We have students who are in New Jersey on the other side of the Cape May lose ferry. We need to, the resources in the tri-county area like a Kennedy Krieger Center where students can get their needs met in the county, or at least in the Southern Maryland area. I hope that you'll create a strong partnership with our new superintendent, Dr. Townsill, and continue to build with the Board of Education. Hopefully, he has their last Board of Ed meeting. They said they were gonna come back and meet again, so we'll see how that goes. As a parent, ten years ago, at my first IEP meeting, it was just a lot of smiling and nodding cause I didn't know what was going on. And in the last ten years, I've been to many trainings and clinics, and now I'm an advocate, and I know what to ask for. So it's important that we get those trainings out to parents. They know to ask for McKinney-Vento when they're temporarily homeless. They need to know about the Medicaid program so their kids can get services. We need to take the stigma away from free and reduced lunches so that parents get the resources they need for their students. It could have been different. Ten years ago, I was lucky to have a group of people who sat down and saw past the deficiencies that my child had and got him into services early in intervention. And now he's in seventh grade, in gen ed, a hundred percent of the day, doing great. So let's keep that positivity going for all students. Parent outreach is just key, and keep doing what you're doing. I appreciate everything you guys do. It's hard being on that side of the desk. I'm glad it's not me. And if you ever have any questions or wanna know more about special education, please reach out to me in Calvert County CEC. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a new caller. If you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that takes us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gadway?
Thank you Commissioner President. I see we're getting done early. I haven't made any comments yet today, so that might have something to do with it.
Maybe why we're, we're.
We're finishing up early, so I've got, I've got a few now.
You're not gonna mess it up, are you?
Oh, here we go.
Here we go, I got my list. Earlier, earlier last week, I had the wonderful opportunity to go, to go to the Calvert Marine Museum Volunteer Awards as I did last year. It never ceases to amaze me the amount of volunteers and the amount of volunteer hours that the people put in down there. And I was able to accompany two of the other Commissioners on that. Right now, on our YouTube channel, we are at six hundred and sixty subscribers. It's went up from this morning. So I ask, and everybody else asks, please log onto YouTube, subscribe, click the bell notification for, so you, so you get notified when new videos are uploaded. And with that being said, we have a dedication tonight down at Skipjack Road, ribbon cutting for their facility. And I hear that there's going to be a special appearance by one of our talented actors and/or stars. And there's going to be a very special presentation by either him or her, so I encourage everyone to come out and see that. A few weeks ago, I made a comment about a groundhog that appeared and saw a shadow. I do apologize about any negative things I said about said groundhog. I learned my lesson the last few days. Yes, it has been cold, winter is still here, but will someone please turn the heat back on? And in closing, I was asked to mention Calvert County Public Schools Transportation Survey. This is able to be seen on the Calvert County Public School website. This is going to help build next year's bus routes, and the deadline for that is this Friday. So please take a moment, if you haven't already, hop onto the Calvert County Public Schools website and fill out their survey. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Mr. McConkey?
We all attended, we had a great lunch with the Governor Larry Hogan and some of his staff and his wife and daughter, and that was a really good thing. Food was amazing and just good, good to see he's doing good health-wise, and that's all I had.
Commissioner Hart?
Just echo what my fellow Commissioner said, and then, you know, the Marine Museum's always been such a special place, and it truly, it doesn't happen without the volunteers. We could not staff it to that level, so once again, thanks to them. And Commissioner Gadway brought up about the ribbon cutting tonight. If you haven't watched those videos, I kid you not, they're good. They really are. You go on YouTube and watch it. You know, a lot of it will be the neighborhood you live in. There's a lot of stuff you didn't know. There may be some local celebrities you may see on there, giving some information and some history. You'll have to tune on there to, to see, but they do a fantastic job, and, uh, I think that's probably, probably it. I think you guys covered it all, so.
Thank you. Mr. Weems?
Yes. Mr. President, I want to extend my sincere condolences to the friends and family of Martin Robbins, Red Jackson, Michael Marion, Mike Luna's, and Commissioner Hart, and I lost another classmate, Ms. Joy, to attend. And, um, I was a panelist for Leadership Southern Maryland on Friday, as you ate with the governor.
I should have got your crab cake to go, I'm sorry.
Right, right. Yeah, at the detention center.
I sent it to the jail while we went to Jerry's.
That's right. And I think Rai Sharma said that it's not a dump, it is a convenience center.
On that a few times, yes, yes, yes.
Yes. The only other thing I want to speak of is just the topic change. As elected officials, we have a primary, we have a general, and in those elections, the body of citizens get to choose who stays, who goes. And, um, whether you love or hate the game, the new player or players are unknown. And I wanna quote Socrates, "The secret of change is to focus all of your energy not on fighting the old, but on building the new." And in that vein, I would like to congratulate Dr. Andre Townsill.